This conference will now be recorded.
All right, it is 6:30 on June 25th, 2020. We will call our regular meeting of the Rome City Council to order. We'll go down the row and make sure we have a forum of council members present. Councilmember Josh McCabe?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kenny Crenshaw?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Priest?
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Leanne McCosky?
She will be here shortly.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Eason?
I am still here.
Okay. All right, we have a quorum of council members present. We'll move on to our public presentation and input. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear comments during this designated time. I'll ask the city secretary if we received any forms by the deadline.
Yes ma'am, number one. And this is from Deborah B. Kraft, and she asks that I read it in to the record, and it's regarding the Agenda Item F. And she states, "I am asking that the council approve waiving fees for city limit-based nonprofits and charities. There are not that many in the city limits of Rome, and the publicity of a nonprofit holding an event here is great PR for the city and for the pavilion. The city makes money from our events even though we have never been charged any fees. They make money because the public that comes to our event spends money at the gas stations, convenience stores, and restaurants, and the city gets sales tax dollars from that. People that have come to our events have liked it and asked about having their own event here. It is advertising Rome in a positive light, and that is never a bad thing and always needed. We have had people at our event ask about housing here and ask about business opportunities here. Even if the city never gets one dime from our events, what they get in advertising, goodwill, and positive PR could not be paid for." She understands that the city needs to recover and/or make some money on the rental of the pavilion, but she thinks that they could waive the fees for the nonprofits that are based in the city limits only. This would be along the same lines as the difference in pricing for residents and non-residents. We have a wonderful park and great pavilion, but it has been grossly under-promoted. The city needs to promote the pavilion rental to host weddings, family reunions, company picnics, and other such events. There could be outdoor corporate seminars. It needs to be aggressively promoted in order to make money for the park and recreation department, not just the city, not just on the city website. Reach out to local and area businesses, corporations, and manufacturers. Find websites, Facebook pages, and other social media to promote the rental of the pavilion. She will ask again that the council consider waiving fees to nonprofits that are based in the city limits of Rome. Thank you.
All right. Then there were no others?
No ma'am.
Thank you. All right. We will go on to announcements from the mayor and council members. First of all, I would like to let everybody know the WISE Recoverers Grant Program will kick off on Monday at 8:00 a.m., Monday, June 29. The applications are available on the county's website. We have shared that information with our business distribution list to get that word out. So if you're interested in applying for that, work with the county on that. That's a resolution with the county that the council took the action on at a previous meeting. Is there anything I need to add to that, Cynthia?
No, and I, you mentioned it, but just highlighting that when they send it in an email, they need to make sure that they don't send it at 7:59 a.m. because it will be, it won't be qualified. So they need to wait until, you know, after 8:00 a.m. I would, you know, make sure they wait until just after 8:00 a.m. and to get that in.
All right. I see a hand, Mr. Reese. Do you have an announcement, or do you need a clarification?
Wanted to comment on the same topic. Cynthia was trying to send out, I think it was Cynthia, it could have been Shannon, one of you ladies, send out the forms associated with the economic help. And I printed them out, and I've handed a few of those out to some of our business owners in town. And some of them had no idea. I don't know, I don't know what mechanisms we've used. I know we, I've seen it on social media. Especially the ones where we know that, like restaurants had to close their doors. You need to find some way to really make certain that, you know, they're aware. When I read it out, people were like, "Well, I had no idea."
Well, okay. Okay, we'll follow up with that. This is purely announcements, I'm not really discussing on a specific topic, but we'll follow up on that. And Cynthia, if you'll get with Mr. Eason on the ones he contacted, make sure they're included on our list.
Thank you.
The next announcement, the beautification fund went out on the June water bill. We've been waiting for that for a while, so if you haven't opened your water bill, please do so.
Sure.
And then the council meeting on July 9th will be another virtual meeting as well. So just mark the calendars on that. And Cynthia, was there one more announcement that we needed to make? Yes?
We are accepting applications for the PNZ and the Park Recreation Board. The deadline is Thursday, July 2nd at 5:00 p.m. And that will be on the July 9th agenda for appointments.
Thank you. I knew there was one more. All right, are there any other announcements from council members? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by the council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the council, on the consent agenda for further deliberation. A, the minutes of the city council regular session dated June 11th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Crenshaw? Mr. Crenshaw, I heard you make a motion for...
Yes, I made a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second on that motion? Mayor Proton Priest? I see you.
I will second.
Okay, all right, all in favor, let's go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Yeah.
Councilmember McCosky?
Aye.
We have an aye. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. An agenda approved. We'll now go to our section, the public input on B, receiving public input regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Have we received any written input on this?
No ma'am.
And then, do we want to open it up to see if there's anyone that has a comment? All right, I'm not hearing anyone that wants to have any input on this. So if there's nobody that...
There is somebody who wants to speak.
Okay, yes, can you please tell us your name?
It's Shirley Mize.
All right, Ms. Mize?
Okay, I have a few questions that I'd like to address with the budget. And administration, under your hiring and testing expenses, you only got it budgeted for $300, and that's supposed to be for payroll-related expenses to be combined with all the payroll costs, hiring, pre-employment, and drug testing. My concern is that's too low.
Okay.
And you're, on your wages, as far as salary and wages, my concern is, I don't understand where you're coming up with your marketing analysis. I think we should have a breakdown of that on each department.
Okay.
And on your, your building and development for permits and flats, you've got a large amount for that this year increased because of Roland V development. My concern is Roland V is not in the city limits. And if you're doing permits and flats for them, shouldn't that be basically their cost, not ours?
Are you looking at the revenue line, the permits and flats?
I am looking at the revenue line, yes. But to me, it's an increase for Roland V, but my concern is, they're, they're not in our city limits, so how are we going to intake money from them on that? And then, for us, give them services, you know, my concern of that would be the same concern, is what is our, our role there? Because that would cost us money as a city.
Okay, the, the city is under, under contract to do permitting in the ETJ, or plating, I'm sorry, not permit, permitting, but plating ETJ, so we do do that.
Did you speak up, Michelle? We couldn't hear you.
The city is under contract to do plating in the ETJ.
But you're saying, whatever they don't pay us.
Yeah. What they're saying is going to be $50,000.
Do you have any other comments, Ms. Mize?
Yes, I do. On street repair, on your building and development, you've got it budgeted for $100,000, but you weren't budgeting that for last year, but you didn't spend that on, on, on street repairs because y'all used it for other purposes. I need to understand what our budget was for that, and that's how we increased it to the $100,000, and that will keep that $100,000 to actually do street repairs for, for our residents.
Okay.
And on your administration for your credit card fees? You talked about you were going to pass that along. Wouldn't you want the city to work less than more? Because to me, a credit card payment to you would be less of your employees having to deal with taking money at the city hall versus them making a payment online. Because the customer handles all of that, basically y'all just see the funds coming in. If you're not going to allow them to use your credit card services without the fee, then they're going to start walking into the facility to make payment with a check that you have to deposit. And then they're also going to hand you cash, and you're going to demand that it be the exact cash, which I can't believe that even works for our city. But I just need to understand that we're not overworking our employees for the benefit of not using the credit card services to benefit not having to use your employees to take the money.
Okay. All right.
Okay, on your water and sewage? You've got, under emergency repairs, you have nothing budgeted. How do you fix anything in the city if you're not budgeting for repairs for emergencies? And also on water and sewage, it also has the credit card fees on it as well being passed on to the citizens?
Okay.
Also underwater and sewage, under your utilities for gas and electrics, you're stating over in the comments section that the increase to match higher actuals for 2018 and 2019. That's 2019, 2020?
Okay.
And then also, again, the analysis is being used on that for your wages and your salaries. I need to determine what that stores, as far as the breakdown of how you come up with that figure.
Okay.
That's all the questions I had.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Can you get back to me?
Yeah, we're compiling questions and input from, from council and everything tonight. This is the first of several discussions on the budget. So we'll have several more opportunities to give more information and explanations. Was there anyone else that had a comment for the public input section? Okay, if there aren't any other comments, then I'll ask those to mute your calls because we're getting some feedback on, on some of the callers unless you're speaking. All right, so we'll move on to the regular agenda, old business. Item C, discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This is for council to, thoughts, questions, anything that you have wanted to either get more information on or update for. I'll see if council has anything. Mr. Eason?
Yes. Would you please go to the police section on the expenses? Your overtime? That seems like it's getting suspiciously close to what it costs for another officer. Should we, should we consider hiring another officer instead of having the additional, having so much overtime? It's just a consideration? No, no decision now, I'm not asking for that, I'm just... Bruce is all, okay?
Okay. I've got that down as well. Any other comments, concerns, questions from the council? Anything that you see that's not in line with our overall plan that we've worked on?
I like it, I think you've done a very nice job.
Well, as I said last time, it was the culmination of all the staff working together over a period of time to develop this. All right, if there aren't...
The notion, what will give it the flavor, so you understand it.
Yeah, so, so if, any of the explanations, if you need more, or you think there's not enough, please let us know, because we certainly have time to update that and get that information out for everybody to have time to look at it. All right, if there aren't any other comments on this, this is not a night where we're going to make any decisions, it was just a discussion night. If there's not anything from council, we'll go on to Item D, discussion update on the revised budget schedule for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. So, you know, is everything in our new, new world in 2020 with being adaptable and changing? We've had to amend some of the dates on our schedule for the process of approving a budget and our tax rate for this upcoming year. So I wanted to highlight a couple of the date changes, and then we'll, we'll send this out to you so you can mark your calendars, but we just wanted to give this information to you in a council meeting. So we have tonight, we were just going to hear some discussion, take some preliminary input from the public. Our next council meeting, you will receive the list of city inventoried assets as required by the ordinance. That will be an opportunity for more discussion at the council level. And then also on July 23rd, we'll have this on the agenda for that meeting as well. So if, if you look at anything and come up with some ideas, let us know at those meetings what you're interested in updating or getting more information about. Then on July 25th, we will receive the certified property tax rule from the appraisal district. Right now, we have a preliminary number, and that's what this proposed draft version of the budget is based on, but that number could change up or down. We just don't know until we get that certified property tax rule number from the appraisal district. Once we get that on July 25th, we're going to need to hold a special council meeting on July 30th. And that will be our opportunity to look at any changes in the certified tax rule and what we have in the budget we're working on, and decide where we want to make those changes up or down, depending on what the number is. We also have to submit some tax, proposed tax rates to the city council, and then we'd have to post those on the website as well. And then on, we'll, we'll do our normal meeting, the first August meeting, and then we'll do our second August meeting on August 27th. That will be potentially a, a public hearing if two are required. And then on September 3rd, that's another day you need to mark on your calendar, that's a special meeting night, it's a Thursday, and that would be the required public hearing that we have to have before we can adopt the final budget and ratify the final tax rate on September 10th, our regular council meeting. So the two dates that you need to mark are July 30th and September 3rd, that will be special meetings that require a forum of four to be able to hold the meeting. So we will email this to you so you can have it in front of you, but we wanted to bring that to your attention, that we're going to have to amend some of the dates that we had told in the, but the schedule beforehand. Any questions on that? Mr. Eason?
I was under the impression sometime back in, I guess, December?
Yes.
That they needed to have the budget finalized to the end of July. Did they, because of the coronavirus, did they move it back to September?
A lot of this is just evolving information, you know, we had Senate Bill 2 pass last fall, and then just diving through all the information, and so we're getting clarification on things. So no, it's not related to the coronavirus or anything like that, but, but we're not anticipating a tax rate that's going to require an election, so we're able to ease our dates back a little bit. And then there's a certain number of dates between when you post it, when you can take action on it, and this schedule fits those requirements for our city authorized.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. All right, on to Item E, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the municipal complex renovation project. And so we do have Kim Doughty on the line. Kim, thanks for calling in with us. So the, one of the tasks out of the last council meeting was to get an amendment to the agreement that we have already approved for the design of the... And the amendment was for the community center and the fire station exterior. And so we've sent that to you. The proposal is to, for an additional $48,000 to do the, the design for both of those. So that would be in addition to the 150 that we're spending on the municipal complex facility itself, and the parking, and the exterior of that. Yes, sir?
I was looking at the Agenda Item E, the details that were set out this afternoon, and the total basic design service came out of $48,000. Now, it's an 1,800 square foot building, and I know that my house, when I had all the architecture and design work done, that number's six times what I had to pay. And that was only seven years ago, so $48,000 seems a pretty steep price. And I was just wondering, what, what are we getting that's above and beyond what the architecture and the design is that goes into a house?
That's a good question. I'll see if Kim can help kind of explain a little bit about what goes into that typical...
She's been talking to her phone, but she's muted. She's still muted.
Yeah, but somebody else has an open mic because there is a ton of garbled noise on here.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
No, we can't. No, I'm calling in on my phone, too.
Okay.
Can't hear you anymore.
Can you hear me here?
Yes.
Okay, so the architectural fees, those do include all the architectural, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, so those will be for permit review, inspections on those, as well as will be doing your rendering to get you ready for your bond. So those will be included. So it's not just the floor plans we'll be doing, but it'll be floor plans, reflected ceiling plans, inspections, elevations, as well as all your mechanical, electrical plumbing. And then if we need to remove any structural walls or anything, we do have a structural engineer on board. If we do not use a structural engineer for those fees, those will be coming back to you. We just needed to have those in the budget for now.
I get that, madam, but $48,000 to do a facelift on the fire station just seems a bit steep.
It's not just a facelift on the fire station, it's the complete renovation of the interior, the planned layout, whatever we need to do for the community center.
Okay.
I think they're all saying a lot of things pretty expensive.
So typically, your, your architectural fees do include all the, the architectural engineering is typically about 10%. So right now, we are setting it right at 8% of the fees, or it's about 6%, and then you add in also your, your rendering fees as well. So we can break those out where we don't do the renderings to bring the cost down some, but I believe that in our last meeting, you said you really needed those to help build the bond.
No.
So, Kim, does the, the design in the community center, help us understand kind of what, you, you've been in the room, what it is that we need, because when you say mechanical, electrical, is this...
We need to bring the... We need to bring the building up into code because right now it's not meeting accessibility code. It's not meeting your new IECC that is required. So there'll be new lighting, new HVAC probably for the system, just to bring everything up within a new code. As well as we'll be working with, because we are bringing in new water to the site. So we may have to be tying into that. So we'll be working with the civil, but the civil, we're just assuming it's all got to be up underneath the city hall. So we're not adding any additional civil expenses to the project.
Okay.
But more than likely, I mean, the restaurants would have to be a complete gut and sort of all those and the rest of the, the kitchen area too, depending on what the exact needs are for the community center and the senior center.
Okay.
So it's not just, you know, just a finished facelift. It's more, you know, bringing everything up to code, making sure you do have the clearances and everything that you need.
Okay, so it, it sounds more like we have the shell and the, and that's really all we have.
Correct. You know, there will be some walls that you'll feel to keep, but we'll just have to look at the insulation and everything else that's there. Just make sure we are in compliance.
Okay, good. Councilmember Crenshaw here. So just so, I'm, I'm, I, I just want to be, understand for myself, the $48,000 would be for the construction too, or just the drawings and design?
That is for the design and the engineering of the facility. Construction's what we talked about.
Not the actual execution and, and building?
No, sir. That was our last presentation where we put up a cost projections to where we were. I believe we were $350,000. I don't have that directly in front, in front of me. About $350,000 for just the community center. And then the fire station facelift was broken out to be separate. And I don't have that directly in front of me, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so this is $48,000 just for a design?
That's correct. Design engineering and getting it in for permitting and, and that would also help us get all the way through bidding. So we will assist the city with the bidding process.
Okay, I, I'm just saying that, that, all that money is for something other than actually having it done. So it just seems like a lot.
Correct. I mean, that's, that's the standard, those are standard architectural engineering fees across the market.
Real high. Okay.
So now these are, these are construction plans. This is everything ready to get up to the bid phase, correct?
Absolutely. So we will be sending up the bids. We will be getting bids in with the city hall. And it'll be on, we can evaluate all those together. Actually, some of our bidding fees, we just went ahead and rolled in. Those were coming from the city hall fees. We're not adding any of those additional to assist for the, the, in the added scope of the work.
Okay. And the, the timeframe for, for this is in line with the timeframe for the municipal complex? There's, it's not going to require additional time? This is going to run in current?
That's correct. That's correct. Where we will have everything done and ready to go, bids and numbers are ready to go in, in October. So as soon as the bond passes, we'll be ready to select a general contractor and move straight into construction. So we will be asking in the bid document to ask the general contractors to hold their bids for 60 days in case the, the city does need a little bit longer to push those through.
I just, I just pulled up the PowerPoint, Kim, that you did, I guess it's two weeks ago. It seems like last week. So the senior center, community center renovation, construction cost was 350. The total project cost was projected at 411. And then the fire station construction cost was 228, and then total project cost was 273.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
This?
Two, 6, 684 roughly combined plus the 48 is what we're looking at. Councilmember Easton?
I know this, I may be talking about water that's just too far under the bridge. And I know that we're in desperate need of a municipal complex. But when I look at that number, it really makes me feel like all the other numbers may be too high too. I mean, forgive me, Kim, it's my ignorance, okay?
No, you're fine.
Um. I, again, I, I, I'm losing confidence in the, in the estimates. Because I, I think of the design, and I'm talking about an 1,800 square foot building that already has a foundation and it has exterior walls and it has a, it has a roof. And I don't believe we're changing those. And we're doing a facelift on the, um, fire station. And $48,000 just seems steep. Yeah, no, I know that I'm cheap, okay? Or frugal or parsimonious, whatever word you want to choose.
Frugal words.
What?
Frugal words.
Frugal words? But the thing is, I, I, I want to think of the, this money, I mean, the, the city's money is not just an open pot, you know? Even though we're going to try and pass a bond, we've got to be, you know, we've got to be responsible with this money. And like I said, $48,000 for the design and you haven't built anything. And again, I look at 1,800 square feet and the foundation's already there, et cetera. So again, could just be my ignorance. It just feels like a lot of money.
So we can take that back to our engineers and see if we can get the cost down at all. But the cost that we are receiving from our engineer that's working on the city hall is very standard for this type. So. And just let me know what you want to do. If you want us to take it back and reevaluate this, anytime we add to the schedule that will potentially add to the schedule with another two weeks to get our team up and running.
Well, as a point of clarification, I just want to make sure and to, the, the figures, Kim, that I gave you from your PowerPoint last, two weeks ago, they actually included the design fee, correct? I mean, so the two, the 273 and the 411, 273 for the fire and the 411 for the community center. It says it includes the design fee. Now, the, what you just gave us on the design fee for those two was more of a breakout of it, right?
Right. Hang on one second. I'm opening up those fees while you're talking.
So as I understand it, the 48 would not be on top of the 273 plus 411, which is 684?
Just one second. I'm almost have that part of it open where we have a cost projection.
Yeah, so on the PowerPoint, it was eight, nine and 10 slides, nine and 10.
Just one second. Did I have that in the spreadsheet? Hang on. Bear with me. Trying to find our spreadsheet where we had, had everything broken out individually.
I guess the thing to, while she's looking for that, the thing to remember is, you know, I mean, we can, we can piece these out in projects. You know, I think, you know, the community, all the council knows the community center is important in the fact that if we're going to do away with the building that is currently being used for the senior luncheons and functions like that, that we, we need to have a place for them. And whether this current place without any changes is adequate or not, I mean, that's, that's probably a, a question we need to consider. You know, the exterior on the fire department, you know, to me, that's more of a aesthetic thing. And if we're worried about cost, then I think that's definitely on the table to, you know, if we need to shave that off, that's an exterior facelift. You know, yes, we'd like it all to be compatible across the board, but if we're looking at how much things cost, you know, exterior's not as important as the phone buildings have. Mr. Easton?
Hi, Michelle. This is Kenny.
Yes, Ms. Crenshaw?
Yeah, I mean, our concern is not just that. It's what would the cost for this be if it weren't a city government? I just, you know, just sometimes I think, they think we got bottomless pocket and our taxpayers, you know, we got to watch out for the taxpayers, which we are one.
Right.
But that, I think that's the biggest concern is it just seems like when it comes to city government, there's a bottomless pit of money. And it just seems a little steep. We got to pay, I mean, it's going to be up to the taxpayers whether or not they want to spend this money.
I believe that we, we need to have the renovation done to the, um, community center. It needs to be ADA compliant. It needs to be brought up to code. Okay, I'm not questioning that.
I agree.
I, I, I'm not questioning whether we need a facelift on the fire department. I mean, I want to be able to, I'd love to be able to drive by and have it actually look like a fire department. You know, instead of, well, instead of how it looks. Um, I, I just, again, I'm cheap, okay? I've got a really hard time swallowing that.
No, I, I understood, understood.
So the typical architectural fees that you will see on any municipal project or commercial type project, those are going to range anywhere from eight to 10, sometimes 12%, depending on the project. We are definitely not that high on this project, knowing that we are tying in with this other one. So everything that we're proposing is right in line that we would do with any other, any other type of architectural, not just because you guys are a municipal project.
Okay, somebody's talking and I can hear them and they need to be on mute.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest, do you have a comment?
Well, I agree with Kenny. We've got six callers, at least, or five callers that have, have their microphones open. And every time that a motor runs or they cough or they talk, we, we can hear that. And so it's a, it's a lot, it makes it difficult for us to hear each other as we have our discussions. So that's the first thing. If you could quickly look to see how you can mute your, your microphones, those of you that are called in to listen, it would be helpful. The other thing, you know, and you've heard me say this before, there, there is alternative funding to help us with these projects. We're on the short term here to be able to justify expense and to identify how other ways that we can pay for part of this. But it's going to take us to getting together and looking and exploring. And, and what's even more, the next step that's going to be time, more time consuming is how we investigate and research and come up with a comprehensive plan. We can't ignore that or we're not going to be successful in completing this project, is my, is my personal opinion. And so there are lots of things to explore for alternative funding that not necessarily will come from the taxpayers, uh, from, from that part. It'll be, it'll be major as far as a, as a bond, but there are alternative funds. But we've got to get together and work on it. It's not going to happen accidentally. So that's, that's, I keep, I know you're tired of hearing me saying it, but that's what we need to do.
Thank you. But thank you, Mrs. Priest. You're right. We do need to focus on the alternative funding. And since I'm ignorant about how the standard prices are going to go, I'm just going to move on. So unless there's further discussion, Mayor, you're welcome to move on.
Any other comments from any other council members?
So this is Josh. On the topic of frugal, I know, I think the original plan was to demolish the senior center that's currently there. Is it possible to move it and use it for something else somewhere in town? Or was that ever an option that we thought of?
Move what?
The, move the current.
You like, just relocate the building, physically move it?
Right. And so demolish, just relocate it somewhere in town and we can use it for something else. I, I don't know what, but there's a lot of options that we could use it for. I mean.
I think land would be a challenge, what land the city currently owns, that we could do that, because we're limited on what we have. Kim, what, what is your experience in that kind of stuff? I don't, I don't really know anything about moving buildings.
We would probably have to have a structural engineer take a look at this. Worked with the city of Lake Worth. They relocated a residential to a facility that we worked on that was their multipurpose senior center library. And they used it for a, basically a museum for the city, because it was the first residence of Lake Worth. So what they did, but doing that, you have to come in and do a new foundation and everything for it to set it on. So whatever land it goes on, you'd probably need to come in and do a geotech report on that, do the borings, just to make sure the soil, the foundation is done just right. So that would be another, it's, it's pretty pricey to do that, especially on smaller buildings. To have it done and done right. And then you'd have to bring up the building to code for accessibility ramps, uh, instead of just stairs, unless it, you were able to set it further down on, on grade. And then all of the electrical, electrical, mechanical and everything, and it would need to be brought up to grade, uh, code.
Okay.
You know, good, good question. That's something we hadn't discussed before. But yeah, we want to make sure we've considered any options. And any other comments, questions from council members? Okay, if, if not, so on to the funding, because that's always my question, is where are we going to get the funds from? I'm not sure how much we would have in this budget year that ends on September 30th that would be available. We have the 150 covered. But the 148, we haven't identified a source for that within the current budget year. So that would be something we would have to put into the upcoming budget year, into the budget that we're looking at. So, you know, unless of course we get a, a great donor who wants to donate toward this cause, we, we've got to figure out how to pay for, for it as well. So I just want to throw that before you and see what your thoughts are on that.
Well, it is what it is. We've, we've, we've pretty much have to move forward. You know, and we're going to have to do what we have to do, right?
Well, I mean, we're a full city area. We, we do the design for these wonderful buildings and the, and the. and the renderings look beautiful, and then the bond doesn't pass, and we've spent $200,000 basically on a project that doesn't move forward. So that would be, you know, we wanna make sure we're mindful of that. You know, we're already, we're already in on, on the other project, we know we need to move forward, we're on a timeframe, so just wanna make sure, you know, we look at everything with eyes protection. So if, if you, you guys as a body are ready to take some action on this tonight, you know, if your instruction is to find the funding in the next budget year, then we will work on the budget to identify that.
So, so on the, on, on finding money, Kim, have you have any experience with auctioning, auctioning off this type of property? That way whoever purchased it has to pay to have it moved and all that, that way we can recuperate some kind of money on this?
I have not been involved on that, on any of our projects.
Hey, Josh, I'm, I'm missing something. What building do you wanna have moved?
The one that's there in the middle of the parking lot right now, that they're gonna demolish and turn it into a parking lot.
Okay, I'm sorry, you were wanting to move the old high school, and I was like...
No, not the whole high school, same. Just trying to throw out random ideas, and I thought maybe, you know, auctioning it off to recuperate a little bit of money, that way whoever, it's on them to pay to have it moved and, and all of that. So, you know, I'm frugal as well, so I try to make a dime anywhere I can.
Okay, okay.
Talking about the old, the senior center, which would probably demolish it just trying to move it, and it would cost a fortune.
So, yeah, I think the idea is, you know, the, the red brick, Kim, did I hear you mention the red brick about the building?
Yeah, I was just saying, it was, it was the red brick building is what he was talking about.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, so what are your thoughts on this? Do you wanna move forward with it, with the understanding the funding would, you know, have to be included in the budget year coming up? Are there any other things that we need to think about on the legal side from the city attorney? Okay, now we're, we're getting a...
Yeah, I'm testing my mute system, it seems to be working, so, no, I don't think there are any other legal issues.
Okay, well, in order to move forward, for the quorum group to move forward with any design work on this, in conjunction with the other design work, it would require a motion of council to approve this amendment to the agreement. Is council ready to make any kind of motion on that? Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Well, I, I, I think I have a comment before there's any motion. I, if, if we look at alternative funding and we find funds that will help with some of these expenses that Kim has outlined in her document, is that as good as cash? You see what I'm saying? I'm saying we can put it in the budget, but if we come up with alternative funding that directly impacts this expense that we're talking about, then if we come up with that, we wouldn't have to spend what was budgeted. Is, is that possible?
Yes, if we, if we can get an alternative source of funding, you know, if you're thinking donations or fundraisers or something like that, to, to not have to have this in the budget for next year, but have it as something we earn before the end of this fiscal year, then yes, we can earmark that money, you know, because if we're taking donations or what have you for a specific project, we would have to use that money for that specific project. So we would just, you know, we would market it, if you will, that these funds would be exclusively to cover the basic design services for the community center.
Well, in that case, with, with that discussion in mind, let me just phrase it that way, I will make the motion, but at the same time, I'm gonna make a statement, and that is, we have got to get on this alternative funding thing. I've got a lot of experience in it, and it takes time to do it, and we can't wait until 30 days before we're, we're gonna have a bond election. We need to have started 30 days ago. So, I mean, I hate to be grouchy about it, but I'm just saying, this, this is money for us, and, and it, but it takes time, not everybody works on our schedule with these sources that are available to us, so...
Well, Elaine, if you will, you say you have experience in it, if you could leave me, I will be happy to assist you. Tell me what I can do.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna take, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, when we started all this, we had set out to renovate the old school, and now it's grown, and we've added all this extra that we, surely needs to be done, I'm not debating that fact, it's the fact that we started out wanting to redo the school. Why don't we stick to our original plan, get the school done, and then move on to another project, and that gives us time to go after this alternative funding, because if we gotta go to a bond election, we're, we need to do what we set out to do instead of adding all this extra stuff to it. That's just my thought.
Okay, um, yeah, I think the community center came up only because if, in, in handling the school building and renovating that for the required number of parking spaces, it would require removing the red building, which would leave, you know, the seniors and other groups without a place to meet during the construction time, other than this community center here, with, with the issues that, you know, Kim had raised, you know, are, are issues. So that, that's my...
Can we not use the existing community center until such time as we can get enough money to renovate it?
Well, and that, that's a question, I mean, we're, we're using it right now, but for certain purposes, you know, there, there, we wouldn't be able to cook and prepare food in the kitchen, because that is not in a state where we can do that now. So it would strictly be just, you know, a meeting room, which is what we're using it for now.
Well, then the only thing we got to do is put it before the voters and see if they wanna pay for it, because, you know, nothing's free. If we wanna do it, the taxpayer's gonna have to pump Tony up, and if they wanna pay for it, then I'll meet.
So how much extra do we have to add to the budget for this, Mayor?
It, well, it's the $48,000.
And if we don't, if we don't come up, if we don't add the $48,000 to the budget, and basically we're saying that we're going to take out facelifts to the fire station and the upgrade to the community center, and we end up with a community center that's still not up to code and still not ADA compliant? Right?
Right, yeah.
I thought I heard Cynthia mention earlier that the cost for renovating the community center and the facelift on the fire department included these costs, and these were just a breakout of what those costs contain. Oh, that's already in this budget.
Our fees, yes, our fees weren't in the budget that we presented two weeks ago.
They, they were, Kim, I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
Okay, so, yes, this is the breakout, but, but this is something that has to be paid upfront in order to do the construction, and to have the renderings for the bond election show the citizens what they would be potentially paying for and voting for.
What I'm saying is those costs are already in there, we don't add these on, has additional cost to it, has already been quoted by Kim.
Right, right, and the total of both was $684,000, including the $48,000, but excluding the $48,000, the construction was 636 combined for both those projects. So, so I guess, I'm hearing some hesitancy on, on everybody's part on whether they wanna move forward with this. I think we all would like to move forward, and one, whether we would like to, and actually have to, you know, pay the cost of it, you know, it sounds like there's a little hesitation on the council's part, is that a good observation?
Um, my hesitancy isn't that I wanna move, I wanna move forward with it. My hesitancy is, I felt like after we had our meeting last time, where we were looking at, and I'm looking at the presentation from last time, preliminary cost projections, construction cost $350,000, total project cost $411, and that includes 7.5% owner contingency and design fees. It says it includes the design fees. And now I feel like it's another $48,000 on top of that.
No, those, those numbers would be reduced with what needs to go under the bond. So basically, the construction cost that you see at $350,000 for the community center, that would be included in the bond, the additional that you'd be coming out of there, because there's $61,000 there, that would be coming out, as well as, let me switch out to the other, and then $228,000 for the, the upgrade of the fire station.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is we need to pay, of the amount already quoted, that would, we would, we would need to pay 48 grand upfront to get it designed, so we can go before the voters with a bond, pay for the remainder, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So where are we gonna get to $48,000 upfront?
Well, that, that's, that's the question that we were talking about, either it's gonna be included in the budget that starts October 1, or as Mayor Pro Tim Priest suggested, that we look at alternative sources of funding that may be available earlier than that.
Well, then the only thing we can, we can do to move forward is to include it in the budget, and then look for alternative funding to replace it.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that.
London?
Okay. So I, we, we have a motion on, on the floor from Mayor Pro Tim Priest, she had a comment to make with it. Are you still holding that motion open?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion?
I will second that.
Well, state the motion again.
The motion was to approve the amendment to the agreement, and, and did you qualify that with, we would include it in the next year's budget, unless there was alternative funding found prior to that budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that is the motion. Mr. Crenshaw, are you seconding that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll go down the row for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on to regular agenda, new business. All right, Agenda Item F, discussion and any necessary action regarding changing temporary vendor fees to exclude nonprofit organizations. We wanted to bring this to you, just to clarify the council's position on how you feel about certain vendor fees, not, not all of them, but in regards to the pavilion, and whether we want to consider, as a whole, nonprofits, having that exemption for nonprofits for the, some of the rental fees. We would not be looking at things like the, you know, health permit, health inspection fees, as that's a public safety issue for, for any event, if it requires a health inspection. And then there's the, the fee that, that is charged, the $25 fee for electricity, even if you're not charged any other fees, those are real costs to the city. And correct me if I'm on a legal aspect, that the city can't pay for private groups, individuals with taxpayer dollars, is that correct?
The only way we can spend public dollars on a private venture is if we can articulate a public purpose that is being served by those expenditures. So I can't say unequivocally no, but you would have to articulate what the public purpose is being served by that unique expenditure.
Okay. So we wanted to bring this back before you to see what, what your position is, and make sure that we were in line with, with what the council as a whole, their intentions are, along with the ordinance. Mr. Easton?
Um, as I said before, somebody has to pay the fees, okay? The, the money's gonna get paid. Now, if the person or group that is using the facility isn't paying those fees, then that, those fees get passed on to the taxpayers. As a nonprofit, I'm gonna use the term charity, charitable organization, and I can never use tax dollars to pay for a charitable organization. Each individual needs to choose what charities they want to donate their money to. It is not the government, whether it be city, state, or federal, it's not the government's business to decide how charitable donations get made. Now, if there are taxpayers in this city that want to pay the fees for a nonprofit, then that is their right and that's their privilege. But I can't see taking tax dollars away to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment or a position on that? Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Well, it gets complicated, and having been a director of a huge nonprofit back when, certainly I have a lot of sympathy for those folks that are officers and directors and, and all they're trying to do is better people's lives and improve the quality of life in the community. I certainly understand that, because I lived it for a long time. But the reality is that the city, city government is restricted by state statute, and we, and it gets complicated. So how do you define a group that is, adds something to the city, whether it's charitable or service oriented, or, or whatever it is that they do? And there is no black or white way to do that, other than 501(c). Well, when you, when you come up with, with that, then lots of, lots of organizations can go do it, can get that, that designation, but are they offering anything really to the, to the city under the definition of what is allowable for the city to support them? It's complicated, it's hard to enforce, it's hard to define. And so, you know, it's, we've had this discussion even with the, the senior group in the library. We all agree with that, that they add something to the community that's good and so, but what we do for one, we have to do for all. And whatever that criteria is, you know, that sets us up for not, it's not a judgmental call. It's got to be a black and white situation. And it's, it's hard. I don't know how we can do it. I don't know how we can choose because it gets then to be a, a subjective rather than an objective situation. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, points of view from other council members?
I agree with Sam as far as nonprofits. We can't allow, we can't, the city can't be paying for the nonprofits to use, you know, some of the city amenities. So I think we definitely have to say no to that.
All right. So it sounds like we're going to leave it as is and the council's good with that. So if I'm missing something, let me know. Otherwise, we'll go on to our next agenda item.
Well, I just, you know, I just, the backlash is going to be that we, we do this for the seniors. We waive that fee for them to use the community building. And we, we want the service that they provide there for the meals. But, you know, one thing about that is it's open to the community. It's not restricted to the seniors. It's to anybody in the community that wants to come over and eat on Friday. And so because it's not restrictive, it's open to the public, it's open to anyone that wants to come. That makes it a little, little different. But in the library, they need us to come up with some funds because it helps them with their grants, helps them qualify for grants. And that's a unique situation in and to itself. So like I said, it's not black and white and it's complicated.
Okay. All good points. All right, so we'll go on.
Excuse me, something?
Yes, councilmember?
Yeah, the churches in the area use the pavilion, are they paying rent to do that?
So, so anyone can go to the pavilion and use it. If you want exclusive rights to use it on a particular day or a particular time, you have to have signed up to reserve that. You know, if you want electricity, you have to reserve that. But, but families, people, you know, can set up a table and have a birthday party out there. They don't coordinate all of that with the city, you know, they show up and they use that. It's open and able, people are able to use it. But if someone rents it for a specified time, the city will ask anyone who just shows up to, to, you know, come back whenever the exclusive event and the reserved time is passed. So does that answer your question?
I just wanted to find out if the churches and that were paying, paying for renting the pavilion for like over the weekend?
If they come to the city? If they come to the city and they want exclusive use and electricity, then they do have to come to us and sign an agreement for that. But if they just want to show up, you know, and not have electricity, then, you know, there's nothing to stop them from doing that.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Item G, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Telephone and Internet Services. You received some information about, our city, city administrator's been doing some research on, you know, our current setup, how things are, and has identified some potential cost savings. Do you want to speak to this agenda item?
Sure. Well, hopefully you have the information and it's, you were able to look through that. We've been researching the telephone and internet costs that we have been expending. And we looked at, we hadn't reached out to the vendors and really kind of renegotiated that and looked at. Technology has come a long ways in the last several years. Bundling packages always change. And in so doing and talking to our current venue, then, vendor, excuse me, we could realize a substantial savings. And that would be if we went, you can see the chart that I provided for you there. Currently, we have NextLink that's internet only. And we have CenturyLink that's internet and phone. And it varies across the departments and you'll see that breakdown below. But when you compare the two, when you look at CenturyLink, we could go, we could upgrade to fiber, which is basically 100 megs up, 100 megs down. And right now, we're on DSL with NextLink. It's, it's slow and not reliable. When you look at CenturyLink, we also could get new, new voice over internet phones. And right now, the phones that we have, the phone system is actually obsolete. So if, they're no longer repairable if they go down. That's how old they are. And so when you look at that cost savings, it's basically about $10,000, $11,048. If we were to go with CenturyLink and, and cancel with NextLink, which by the way, we are no longer in a contract. It was a three-year contract. And we did not renew that. When, there were some changes added about a year ago, but we did not actually renew the contract. If you look down below in your chart, and hopefully you all have that, what I did was I kind of broke it out and compared last year to this next year by department and what those actual savings would be and for each department. The reason why you see that Public Works actually went up a little bit, and this is assuming we went with CenturyLink, by the way, and canceled NextLink. The reason Public Works went up a little bit is because admin, the admin budget has been paying for and covering the Public Works cost in the past. So that has been absorbed in the admins budget of that 20,000 you can see there. So again, it's about a $11,000 savings. I think it's that, you know, every, every little bit held, but that's a lot of money to be spending on, on telephone and internet when we don't have to. So the next steps would be, you know, the staff recommendation would be to go ahead and just cancel NextLink altogether. But don't do that until we actually get the fiber set up with CenturyLink. And what that would entail would be entering into a contract with CenturyLink, which we could bring that back to council. But that would be, they would come out here, fiber is available to all the buildings. We've done an inventory of everything that we have, so fiber is available to all the buildings. But it's, it's like, I would liken it to a sewer line, right? If it's going across, down the road, we still have to get it to our building. So they would send an engineer out here and get all that lined up and set up. That takes anywhere from 60 to 90 days. So it's, we're coming right up to the next budget year. Maybe a month before the next budget year. But if we did do it before, it's still a cost savings even to this year. So my recommendation was, it would be as soon as we can get it established with CenturyLink. Whether that is, you know, in September, you would still realize the savings in the budget from this year. And then, of course, next year, we've already, hopefully, those, the, the fee, the fees that you see and the budget you see for telephone and internet was based on this proposal.
Now, that would include them stubbing out the fiber to the new municipal complex?
Yes. And they, because, yes, yes, it would, sir. And
Fiber is the way to go.
Yes. Absolutely. The huge, this would be a huge upgrade all the way around. And for half the cost, it's like kind of a no brainer.
In my opinion, this is a no-brainer. If we need a motion, then I will make a motion that we make steps to switch to CenturyLink and get the fiber.
Okay, so that motion means that we would terminate the agreement with NextLink, contingent upon getting CenturyLink to stub in what needs to be in place for that to transition? Is that?
Yeah.
This is, okay, thank you. Is there a second on that motion? Councilmember Easton and McCabe, I think I saw you both at the same time. Which one wants to be the second?
I'll do it.
Okay, Councilmember McCabe, thank you. All right, let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries on that. So we'll get to work. The next item, Item H, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Website Updates. City administrator's also been working on this because I think we'll all agree that the website is in dire need of upgrade. And we've said this for many, many years. So she's been hard at work with staff identifying some potential candidates and kind of the cost on that. You want to kind of give us a quick summary on that one?
Sure. Well, as you guys know, this really aligns with the comprehensive development plan that you all approved about a year ago and really increasing transparency, increasing accessibility and, and increasing communications with the residents. And so the website is obviously one of the main ways we can do that digitally. And we did, I was pleasantly surprised. I was expecting higher costs, but I was pleasantly surprised. But we went out, we got five different proposals from various providers. Several are, most of them are standards within the industry. And when I say the industry, providing websites for municipal, for local governments, for municipalities. You know, some of the things that we looked at were how, you know, the pricing and the terms, obviously. I mean, how easy is it to read? Navigate, is it clean and simple? What are the security features on the websites? What's the backend content management? How easy is that? And so in making those evaluations, we're looking at one of the lower prices that actually came in, next to the lowest actually. Because the pricing came in for the initial update anywhere from $2,000 to nine, excuse me, $9,000. Which $9,000 is actually not bad for an entire website, but, and then, you know, there's yearly ongoing cost for the hosting and maintenance and security updates and all of that. So we're looking at a company called Revise. And that's kind of, they have, all of them had very favorable payment terms, options to pay it out over time. And small down payments to try to get, most of them, any, can be anywhere from 60 to 90 days to get it up and running. Yes, Mr. Easton?
Are you making recommendations, Cynthia?
I am.
Okay. So you, so, so staff has studied this and you're making a recommendation?
I'm making the recommendation that you would authorize us to move forward and negotiate a contract and then bring it back for your approval.
Okay, so how about, what's the cost?
The cost is
What, give me a, what's the, what's the number?
Yeah, the cost is $3,000 for the update on a yearly basis. It'd be approximately $1,500 or $2,000. The down payment would be $500.
Fantastic. I make a motion that we take that recommendation.
All right, so we have
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Easton and a second by Councilmember Crenshaw.
Excuse me a minute. Cynthia said she's seen five different quotes on this so far. And, I mean, we're just jumping on a number that she's thrown out there. She's got a company that you recommended us using, or have you seen their work and so forth and so on?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. Yes, we got proposals anywhere from 2,000 to 9,000. We've gone, we've talked with all of them and we've worked with them. And yes, I mean, we've looked at their websites. All of these companies, there's five, have done work with other municipalities. We've looked at those websites. So yes, we've, we've done all that.
All right, just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out. So we have a motion and a second on the table, so we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you. We'll go on to our next agenda item, Letter I, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Inner Local Agreement with Tarrant County for Cooperative Purchasing Program. This request was initially brought by our new Public Works Director, Sean Dedz, for, this is just to be able to piggyback on any special pricing that Tarrant County may get that we may be able to utilize in the future. It's not actually purchasing something at this time. It's the ability to piggyback on their purchasing, the discounts and volume, you know, that type of thing. So that is, all we're requesting today is the ability to have that if we find something that needs to be purchased. Councilmember Easton?
This sounds like a good idea. Is there a downside to this?
Not that I'm aware of, and legal has reviewed the agreement already.
Yeah, this is, this is a good opportunity and it meets the requirements of public procurement if we, if we buy things off this contract. So it's, it's a good saver, staff time saver, and it's good for the city.
I make a motion that we accept this inner local agreement.
All right, I have a motion. Yes, Councilmember McCauskey, I have your second. All right, with a motion and a second, we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor Protim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. On to Item J, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Proposed Sale of Older Model Out-of-Service Fire Engines. So a little history on, there's actually two, two engines, actually a quint and an engine located out behind the fire station. These are older model out-of-service fire engines that not being used. There's no, no future for these, these two trucks with the fire department. So roughly five years ago, the council at the time authorized the fire department to put these two up for sale. One of them, the engine is the 1994 E1 Hush Pumper. It has been on the, let's see, Brenn lead is the website, the, kind of like an auction website. It, it has been on there for many, many years with no takers. And so now And so now somebody has approached the fire department with an offer, a cash offer, and we would like to request that the council approve accepting that offer since we have not had any interest in from any other sources. Any comments, questions on that, concerns? Councilmember Ethan.
If it's at least $1, I think we should accept it.
Yes, it is more than $1. So on the website, it's listed for 30,000 and that's actually been reduced a couple of times. It's just an older model engine. There's not a big market for that. You know, it's not something that, you know, that we are going to spend any money fixing. So yes, a cash offer would be welcome to
Is the offer reasonable, in your opinion?
Yes, the the offer is $4,000. You know, it's not the 30 that we have on there, but, you know, in five years, if we haven't had an offer, it's accumulating dust out back and it's not getting, there's no value being added to it out back. And at this point, moving forward on a municipal complex, we have to clear those fire trucks out anyways. We can't keep them any longer back there if we're looking at potentially redoing all that as parking and updating that. So it's time to
Is this still functional?
Um, it depends on what day it is. It needs a few few pieces. The starter, you know, is an issue. You know, it takes two people to start it. And it does require some money spent in it to to get it into working condition. But the purchaser, I think, understands the condition that it is, as is. So no, 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 I couldn't go back there, turn it on right now.
My assessment is surplus property. It's salvage property or surplus.
Right.
Yeah, well, with all that said, I will make a motion that we move forward and accept this offer and sell those that equipment. It's just it's going to end up costing us more.
I have a motion from councilmember Crenshaw.
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember McCosky, thank you. All right, let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, our last item before adjournment, item K, discussion and any necessary action regarding proposed use of coronavirus relief fund, the CRF, and authorizing the American Spend Funds for the city's remaining allotment on eligible expenses. So let me revisit this because we we used part of this, we used 20% of the city's allotment. Remember, the city's allotment was $106,315 for the relief fund. And the council approved authorizing 20% of that allotment to be included in the Wise Recover Grant Program. So we've combined our money with the county, 20% of it. So we have the remaining 80% of that 106,000. So that is $85,052. The $85,052 can be spent on items related to mitigating COVID, items such as, you know, the cleaners that we use, hand sanitizers, contactless thermometers, simple masks. There are other things if they're to mitigate the medical issues with dealing with COVID. So we could do testing for our staff or the antibody testing. That's something that's also a qualified expense. So so we've emailed and talked to the department heads about different things that we think would be eligible expenses that would be beneficial to purchase. And so we need authorization to be able to utilize that 80% to start making these purchases. Yes, councilmember Ethan?
The purchases, of course, I believe, need to be made because we need to take care of our our people. My really only question is, is this a loan or is this a grant?
This this is reimbursement money. So we don't have to repay it back. It just has to be used for eligible expenses. So for example, fire department, police department, their uniforms. We can get an extra uniform for fire and police under this program, get reimbursed so they have an extra set of uniforms. Because if they're on a call, whether it's a traffic stop or a medical call or a wreck, whatever type call it is, if they get exposed to somebody COVID positive, then they have to come back, they have to decontaminate and they have to put on different clothes. And right now, we don't have an extra set for for many people to come back, decontaminate and change. And so that would be something we're proposing to do is to have a backup for our officers or our firefighters. We also want to look at, one thing that's been on the fire department's list is an extractor for cleaning gear. Because when you're exposed to somebody, you have to clean your gear, you know, currently we have to put it in just a regular standard washing machine, but that doesn't clean the gear the way it needs to. We'd also like to look at the PD installing a washer and dryer for their for their uniforms if they get contaminated. Another thing that is an eligible expense would be AEDs. Right now, we don't have any AEDs other than we have one at the PD that they trade car to car when they come on and off shift, but they only have one. And then we have two at the fire department. With this funding, we could put an AED in the community center. We could put one, we could get more for the PD to put in several of the vehicles. So there's there's quite a few opportunities to improve, you know, the way we're mitigating COVID. Yes, Mr. Ethan?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor for expending these funds.
Right. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll go to a vote. Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we will get busy on that. If there's no other discussion on that item, we'll move on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, councilmember McCosky and councilmember McCabe, thank you. All right, we'll go to councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Ethan.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. It is 8:09 PM. We will adjourn. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Good night. Good night.